And as we come before you, Lord, we bring all things and we lay them at your feet. We just pray and ask for your divine intervention, your guidance and your healing touch on our land and in our hearts and lives. We just praise you and thank you for the blessings to be able to come before you and lay these things at your feet, and it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Daniel. Thanks for coming. Tell Adam we said hi.
Okay. Have a good day.
You too. I call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to our meeting, council meeting of September 2nd. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take the roll call piece? Randy Coffey.
Here.
Mike Connell. Mindy Gallopi here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace. Mayor Sue Hammond.
Here.
All is accounted for except council member Steve Wallace and Mike Connell. And next on our agenda is reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the August 19, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would nay. Motion passes. Now we're up to our pre-approved reports and presentations. Mike Connell is the council member who selected the winners of the Perry Pride and put your best face forward today. And he is not, as you know, here, so I'll just give those names. Our Perry Pride winners are Ernest and Candy Sherman of 303 South Main Street. They couldn't be here tonight. And then the honorable mention Al and Argamito at 146 West Orchard, Tom and Kelly Wilson at 116 West Second Street, and Shannon Lantis at 400 Williams. And our best Put Your Best Face Forward Award winner is the Swan Creek Candle Store, 102 South Main Street, Mariah Smith. So, thank you very much, people, for putting your best face forward there. Great. Did I skip something? Oh. Didn't we just approve those? Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't approve our minutes for before. I'm sorry. Yep, I checked it and I didn't do it. So now on our agenda, we need to back up to the reading and approval of the agenda. That's what we did not approve. We approved the minutes, we did not approve the agenda.
Oh, I heard agenda.
I move the agenda to be adopted as printed.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. So now we have Larry and Bob, who made the motion and seconded to approve the agenda. Mindy and Larry did the minutes. Moving on. So the, we have the Perry's Pride, Put Your Best Face Forward winners. We've done that. Do we have any other pre-approved reports or presentations for tonight? Do we have anyone here who's here for public comments? No? How about communications? Devin, do you have any communications to share with us? We are then down to mayor and department head reports. I'll just remind you that you did receive a copy of another job estimate for the library. John tells me we're not ready to put anything on the agenda, but we just wanted you to have that information so you can review it and hang on to that for when it does become an agenda item. And I think our next department head report would be information from any one of our department heads that want to go. Anybody got anything? John?
So, I think it was a couple of months ago, you guys approved the Little John Beer. That package has arrived as of today. So, that's all on site. Not that DPW wants any praise or anything, but the flower pots downtown that ate, we completely gutted them and cleaned them up, replanted everything. So I don't know if anybody's noticed or...
I did.
We don't want any praise or anything.
Veterans Memorial? Because that looks, Veterans Memorial? Someone did that too. It looks better than just a bunch of weeds.
No. We didn't.
That looks nice, yeah.
Nope, it wasn't us. We can't.
Well, you trimmed it all up and you trimmed up the sidewalks. And I will say, those planters do look really nice. But tell them where you got some stuff to put it there.
So we shopped everything local down at Focal Point. Dan Stifler, the owner, is a great guy to work with. So he did help me get everything I needed, so.
Great. Thank you, John.
All right, I'll go next.
Okay. Kyle?
Good evening, everyone. Just update on a few things. The 2022 police utility, Ford Police Utility has been ordered. I don't expect to see anything soon. Probably November, hopefully. Maybe in 2021. We'll save it for 2022, but. Vests have been ordered and they have sized us all so that we get a nice, comfortable fit as best we can. The officers will be going to defensive tactics certification up at Baker College coming middle of September. Alwasso and the Sheriff's Department are putting that together as a joint countywide initiative. And I appreciate their instructors coming together and helping us out in that. Today was range day, so we all got certified. And so, we can move on from that. And I've been working with Larry in the Ordnance and Finance Committee on the code enforcement officer position that we're going to be talking about later. But it's been interesting. So we got some good news and some good information in the last couple of days. So hopefully that helps everyone with that decision coming up.
If nobody's opposed to that, why don't we just jump down to that committee report right now, Larry, and talk about that while Kyle's right here.
Sure. Just to bring everybody up to speed, I know that we've talked previously in here about the Finance and Ordnance Committee. We've got the zoning enforcement ordinances kind of behind us and just waiting to get it implemented. And we're working on the codified ordinances or a few out of the big, thick book. We have now gotten to the point of consensing in the committee on some revisions to the general penalty portion of the codified ordinances and the verbiage on a couple of, excuse me, a couple of the ordinances that were the high priority ones in terms of addressing a number of the complaints that Sue and the girls here have received. And one of the more recent discussion items that we've had in our last meeting, in particular, Kyle brought to our attention that we should have some discussion around the idea of having a code enforcement officer actually as a position on a part-time basis that would allow for some uniform review across the city in terms of, we don't want to turn into a picky community, but there are some areas that we, as a committee field, we need to address. And one vehicle to help with that would be to have a codified enforcement officer in that position. We've kind of done a little preliminary looking at what the fee might be, and we envisioned that it would be a per hour basis for hours that they're actually involved in addressing potential violations. We look for that person to not be going around consistently, but as they see something that is inappropriate for where we'd like to be, that they would step up and begin some verbal discussion with the owners or renters or whatever to try to work toward correction. So I'm open, we're open, we don't have anything ready to put on as a formal recommendation right now, but would like to float the idea of whether or not it's something council is comfortable with us pursuing and bringing into a next meeting, hopefully with actually some verbiage around what the responsibilities might be, what the pay that we'd like to look at would be on a per hour basis. And once again, Kyle brought it to our attention. There are a few other communities that have a code enforcement officer. I actually talked to a person this afternoon at Alwasso that uses that. And there again, it was some input from Kyle. So it's not a brand-new type of position to the area, but it certainly would be new and different for us. But I think on the surface, it looks like it could be a real benefit to utilize and put in place.
Kyle, would you like to share with council what you have found out or what?
Well, given the 30,000 vote you, Alwasso has a very broad, sweeping, I don't know that it's an ordinance, but it's code enforcement. And they utilize a couple of different people who go around the city and enforce this. And when it actually comes, goes beyond the conversation and the notices and all of that, they have an officer who actually signs off on a citation that they have handcrafted and customized for their city. And he signs off on it with the violations and does a short, two-line report, which he showed me a picture of, a screenshot of that report, and it's short and sweet. Basically refers to what the code enforcement officers have found in their investigation. So he's not really, he's just certifying whatever they told him. It's not like he has to be an expert in the international building codes they utilize. But he just signs off that, yeah, they provided me this documentation. I believe it to be true, blah, blah, blah. Here it is. And when and if it ever does go to court, he simply said, he just refers to them. And they step up at that point and say, this is what we found. So it seems like we could utilize a good portion of that. Not necessarily all of it. We're obviously Perry, there are Alwasso. There's some differences. But that being said, I felt like it was a good starting point for us to kind of pick and choose what is going to work for us and what we already have in place and how we proceed from there.
Yeah. The discussion Kyle and I had was kind of like, okay, because I talked to a person like that mentioned this afternoon, would be that look at the ordinances that we're focused on. Is there anything in what they're referring to that we could use to enhance ours and not necessarily try to overlay theirs on top of ours? Because there's, Kyle said, is a pretty broad encompassing code enforcement activity because they take all of their building activity, which we currently have under Rob Kehoe, all the zoning activity. If it's a code violation of any kind, they've got a, and they also have, and we've talked about it in here before, a municipal civil infraction bureau set up because of the size of their city. We wouldn't, we need a decision that we're not going to pursue.
We did, we do now have Leland Scott, who's our zoning administrator. He processes any applications for building permits and things. And he's done that for years, does a great job at that. But he's paid per permit that he processes, and that's the only way he's paid. So we have utilized his good heart in asking him to talk to people when he recognizes a violation or when one is brought to our attention if it doesn't literally fall in the police department or with DPW. And he has done that. But honestly, he doesn't get paid for that time. So we talked to him at our last meeting and kind of gave him a heads up on that so he could think about it, to see if he'd be willing to take that on for an additional hourly rate when he's working on that kind of stuff. And he did say he would. And we, the committee, felt he would be a good person because first of all, he's familiar with the community, very familiar with the ordinances. And he's just very good at talking to people and just trying to work it all out first without letting it get to the point of having to issue a citation. But lacking any enforcement ability, it really has hampered the city's ability to deal with a lot of issues. So he said he'd be willing to do that. So something for us to think about and talk some more about, I guess.
Yep. And like I say, I'd like to have us in a position that if it's favorable among the council members that are here, we'll certainly bring it back with a little bit more detail at our next meeting.
I think it's a great idea. Pardon? I think it's a great idea.
You have one face. Didn't they know there's one face to work with?
Absolutely.
And it knocks down, you can get very subjective when it comes to this. You know, one's person's junk is another man's treasure. And so goes their property and so goes many other things. And you could end up with easily a dozen different opinions on one person's property, whereas one person approaching it can have one conversation and address those things that need to be taken care of. So I like that aspect of it because with five officers, you're going to get five different opinions on my property.
I think with one person, it can work as a mini group or our committee or whatever with that individual, be it Leland or someone else, that we could help among us calibrate kind of where do we want to be in terms of what do we consider a violation? Because there may be some cases where the ordinance, it gets to a gray area and some is subjective. So we could leave me on the same page from what Kyle said. And you've got one person that's trying to uniformly look through their eyes across the entire city.
Any other questions for Kyle? If not, I think he needs to.
I'm going to go to the football team. There you go. Have a good night. Thanks, Kyle.
Bye.
Good night.
Any other department head reports tonight?
She knows what she's told. I like that. I'm so just kidding, yeah. Hi, guys. I'm so excited to be here tonight. This is Megan Gilbra. She's the one I'm training to take over for me when I retire. She's doing an awesome job. She's jumped right in, both feet. And she's even taught me a few things, shortcuts and computer things. And so I'm really, really excited to have her. And I am very confident that she's going to do a great job for the city. As far as department head reports, we got our tax bills in, mailed out, no problem. Everything's going smooth with the collections. We have projects going. We're tracking the final stuff to do with the grant money that we've received or that we will receive once we submit the invoices for John's tractor and Kyle's car. So a lot of things to keep track of. We're doing month-end balancing. And may I say, anything that can go wrong, will go wrong. And if it hasn't gone wrong yet, wait. So we've had lots of opportunities to explore and dissect and, you know, forensic accounting, if you call it that. So we all are learning things. We've had to contact BSNA a couple of times, but things are going really well and I'm very pleased. Any questions? Comments, concerns, or cash? I'm retiring, you know, on the first of February, so. But anyway, so have you had any questions for Megan? She does talk. She does talk. But she's doing a great job. I'm so proud and relieved.
Awesome. We're so glad you're here.
No, you're, thanks. So far, so good. I'll go by there.
I do just want to mention that the Greater Langsberg Recycling Monthly Drive is Saturday, September 11th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00. Anything else under the department head reports?
I have a question. Then what they drive, is that anything special? Or just regular?
That's their regular recycling. There are some special things coming up. They're having a Regional Electronics Recycling Day, September 18th. But that's in Oakmoss. And a Scrap Tire Collection, September 25th. That's in St. Johns. The county does that. So now we'll move back to committee reports. We heard from the ordinance committee. Do we have any other committees that would like to report?
Okay, just a quick update on the Business Affairs and Technology Committee. You know, we've got our contract in place with our website developers. We had a small group meeting this morning with Devin Dory, myself, and Sue joined us to try to provide some clarity because apparently there was some misunderstanding between our committee and the Shoemaker Development Group. We've gone through, trying to clarify a rough draft of what we'd like the front page of the website to be, what we've turned into buttons, what we're having for dropdowns, et cetera. So Devin's going to forward that to Kyle, our president. And I get him to agree that once he's had a chance to look at that, I've asked for a timeline from now until we actually have a website up and functional and going with what are the points in time that we either as a committee or as a council or as the staff people need to be able to weigh in? What are the expectations, requirements, and how long will we have? So hopefully we'll see a Gantt chart or at least a project timeline here in a week or so that we can march ourselves and shoemakers to, to stay on track.
Very good. Any other committees want to report? I'm sorry? Can you have one? Your minutes? Okay. Moving on. Presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment by authorized.
A second.
Bob has moved and Larry has seconded to approve the bills. All those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't see any old business on my agenda. Under new business, we do have some mayor appointments. And those, of course, have to be approved by council. And I can't find my sheet that does that. Hold on. Okay. Melissa Whitson, who you met when I appointed her, she stepped into a vacant position, has agreed to be reappointed to the Local Officers Compensation Commission. That would be for a year. Do I hear a motion to approve Melissa Whitson's appointment?
I move that we approve Melissa Whitson as the mayor's reappointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission, with a term to expire October 2026.
Oh, so that's a five-year thing? Okay. I misspoke, I'm sorry. Do we have a second, Larry? Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve Melissa Whitson's appointment. All those in favor of that appointment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our next appointment is to reappoint Victor Darling to the Pension Committee. Oh, that's the one that's for a year. He has served on that committee and said that he's happy to serve on that committee. He went on to say, because it never meets. So that's, so he was pleased to do that.
I would expect that from Victor. I move that we accept the mayor's reappointment of Victor Darling to the Pension Committee for a term expiring October 2022.
A second. It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy to approve that appointment for Victor Darling to the Pension Committee. All those in favor of that appointment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And one more. That is for the reappointment of Devin Miller to the SADA Board. That term would expire 2024. Devin has served on that board for how long?
It would be a three-year term. This will be my second.
This is your second time, okay. So she is willing to do that? Do we hear a motion to approve that appointment?
I move that we accept the mayor's reappointment of Devin Miller to the SADA Board for a term expiring October 2024.
A second. Bob has moved and Mindy seconded to approve Devin Miller's appointment to the SADA Board. All those in favor of that appointment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then on our agenda is a couple, or a couple items that are really matters for discussion. Things for us to get out our thoughts, questions that we might have. The first one to talk about is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And I might just ask Joanne if she would explain to all of you what has had to happen from our office to be in line to receive that money when it's available? Don't you want to address that?
A couple of weeks before this became available, we were made aware that it was coming down the line. So we got all our ducks in a row. They wanted a copy of our total budget, not including internal funds like motor pool and office equipment, payroll, tax collection. So we put that together, we filled out the application, we submitted this report that was required to the American Rescues Plan Act. And what this is, is this is the COVID money that was been, has been voted, the trillions of dollars. This is finally coming to fruition and coming to the, to the county and to the municipality. For the city, what we are to receive is $218,000, which is quite a bit. That is actually almost as much as our state sales tax that we get on an annual basis. So it is quite a large amount of money. We have confirmation that they have received our application. So they have it. And we are just now waiting for the finalization because what happens, this was put out, do you want this money? Yes, we do. And for anybody who didn't fill out the form or didn't request the funding, I want to say like if 90% of the people said, yes, we do, that 10% that didn't, that's going to be divvied up amongst everybody else. So they don't have a final total yet. This is going to come in two payments. And I want to say, excuse me, one this year and one next year. So, and it's pretty, I don't want to say it's up for grabs however you want to spend it, but you can, they're recommending that you don't make like an installment on a long-term project that's going to, because the funding's not going to be there after the second year. But if you want to fix infrastructure, things like that, that they're recommending, that that would be a good use of this money. If there's projects that you've been putting up because you haven't had the funding, here's the funding.
It does have to fit under certain criteria as far as what we can use it for. And we did send you out all that information, so you all have that. Do you have any questions about what the potential uses? Do you have any questions about what the potential uses can be? I think it's pretty straightforward in this form that Devin sent out to everybody. In my, in my mind, and I'd like to just put this out for thought, is number six is investing in water and sewer infrastructure. And as you all know, our water tower needs to be emptied, blasted, dried out, and painted. And that has been something we've been talking about doing for quite some time. It's total, project total dollars is in the neighborhood of $350,000, right, John?
Yes, I mean, I can't nail it down exact. You know, that's what we put in the budget. So I'm hoping that it's pretty close to that.
And that also, if I remember correctly, was what Sue said, but it also has some other issue corrections and safety enhancements and things.
Yes, there's things that Eagle is forcing us to comply with. You know, we're, we're very fortunate. Most of the time, they repaint about every 15 years. We're, we're going to be at year 21, 22, something in that neighborhood. Hopefully, there's no major issues from the inspection that I did last year. You know, if we move forward and, you know, that's the next presentation that we have.
That's the interior epoxy code?
Interior and this is a complete, I'm doing both at the same time. Interior.
Is this one, I'm sorry, is this one Dixon we have, is that just for exterior?
Yeah, that's just for part of it. We're going to talk about that next, but yeah.
Yeah. So, did I answer everything?
Yep, it's more than just painting inside and outside.
Yep, there's, there's mandatory things that have to be done.
Right.
And that would, if we just did those, that's going to be in the neighborhood of probably $30,000.
Right.
To satisfy that.
The $350,000 or whatever the number ends up being includes interior and exterior painting plus the other items, correct?
Yes.
That's all for the trying to clarify.
So hopefully the numbers come back, but, you know, some of those, that was 2020. I have no idea what things are going to do in two years. You know, after this, with this discussion, we'll go into the Dixon.
Just to think about the fact that what Joanne told us is this money, the American Rescue Plan Act money will come in two parts. We have four years to use it. If we don't use it, we lose it. So if, if we can get a loan to finance the project, we could start with the money that we'd get first, which will probably be about half of that $218,000 or whatever it is. But then we'd have to use a loan from USDA or somewhere to pay for the rest of the project. And then when we get the rest of the money, we could just pay that on that project, that loan. And then we still have to finish paying off the loan, but we can put the entire $218,000 eventually toward the project. Does that sound like that would work, John, from your standpoint?
Yeah, and there is some fund balance that we discussed to use in water, not to take us below any detrimental levels that bonding requirements may mandate that we stay within.
Joe, does that make sense? Does that...
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
That work? Council, questions for Joanne? Questions for Megan? Questions for John?
I have one question for Joe.
Yep.
Because you said four years. I didn't read it. I thought you had to use it within, it was a shorter term than that. I didn't think you could save it and then use it later. Am I wrong in that? Because I read through this...
Not, not looking at getting into that.
I'm sorry?
I said I don't have my copy with me.
Okay.
So without researching that.
Because I thought I read, I read through what Devin sent out. I don't know, this is probably not inclusive of everything, I'm sure. But I thought I saw something in there about that.
Well, we'll, we'll look into that again then, Bob. And I certainly could be wrong. I might have remembered that incorrectly, but...
But I think it's going to be a new point. If we do what Sue described, we'll certainly be spending it in another year.
Yeah.
And probably...
And that's, the spending on the water tower has to be done. Has to be done. And this is a wonderful windfall. But I also, reading through this, one of the things that I saw and it has the capital investments for mitigating transmission of COVID. The first thing, one thing I wrote down here is touchless entries. So, because I know John talked about it, Kyle talked about it, you know, during the key fowl, City Hall, the parks, the library. That's something that, you know, would be a pipe dream for us right now to save up that money. But depending on what the cost is, I have no idea what it would be. But it's something we could look into. This is something we're not going to have, it's in a sense kind of, you know, it's a bonus money in a sense to look at. If we could do something like that, and it's acceptable in the scope of what the restrictions are with that, with this relief money, then we should at least investigate it.
What number are you seeing that?
Page three. Page three, it says now, this is, first thing I thought of is when I read this was touchless entries. It just said, this is service programs to contain or mitigate the spread of COVID, including. And then they have a big laundry list of what you could do. Capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs. And one of the things is, you know, everything's touchless now. And you go to fast food and they give it to you in a basket. So...
Yeah, that's certainly something we can check on. That would never have come to my mind. Because I see that heading that says, "To mitigate the spread of COVID-19", and the things they have listed here, and I, I never even thought about that. So, yeah, that's certainly something we could, we could look at. So as we review this, we're not making any decisions tonight, but we certainly need to really be thinking strongly. Yeah.
No, no, right. That's just a, you know, I, I went through and highlighted things just to...
Because we could use our first half to initiate the loan. And then when we get the second half, see how much in the meantime new security things would cost. And then if we can make that work, use some of it for that and put the rest on the loan, whatever we've got as an overage to do and...
Right, as much as, as much as I would hate to borrow money to do the water tower, the tower is something we have to do.
Yes, we have to.
And it's going to be here forever.
Yeah, yeah.
Keyless entries, in a sense, is something that we would love to do. We may not be, ever be able to. But if we can use this to get that little wish list done.
Yeah.
Which triggers something in my mind that we may want to consider on a future agenda. At one time, we're talking about funding and we had talked about a grant writer and the idea of grants. I'm not sure, and I don't want to belabor it here now, but whether or not the water tower has any opportunity for grant money. I guess the point I'd just like to do was maybe have a discussion item on our next agenda. Is there any value when resurfacing some discussion about a grant writer? I know one gentleman, Bob, that you had talked with wasn't able to make it. And we, I think it kind of, in my mind, kind of slipped off the table.
He fell off the face of the earth.
Yeah. He did, and I think as a result, the subject may have...
Yes.
No, I think there, I think you're right. We need to look into every aspect possible for the capital investment. Because the capital investment in the water system in general is important. Sewer system and water system. So all that stuff is really important.
Can I ask John a question?
Sure.
Certainly.
The engineer that you have been using, would they be a good source with this topic, at least for grant writing? They, they seem to be on the up and now. Only because the example we used for the grant writer, his specialties were a little bit different than what we're talking about. And sometimes you almost need an engineer for this.
When I asked Tom about it, he said that it's been 15 or 20 years since he helped walk a municipality through it. The cost that we would have to pay for him, them to do it, I, I don't think that is...
I figured at least I asked.
I have looked into different things. You know, we looked into the revolving drinking water loan fund. That money was gone as we were starting our meetings. I, I, the money was, is flying out the doors. And I, you know, I, I almost think that we either need to work, if we want to go that route for water and sewer, we probably are going to have to work with a company like Fleece and Vanderbrink or someone who is pursuing that stuff specifically. At least to, to help me. I mean, because they know the inside where I'm just looking from the outside. And, you know, maybe with a little bit more experience. You know, I don't know.
I just wanted to raise it more when we're talking about funding as a general topic of grants. The water tower might be one. There's probably some other things that we are going to run into that we just need to revisit.
Yeah, there's a list of things. And I did not find anything that we could get free money on this deal for at this point. So I'm pretty confident in saying that on Eagle's website. Other places there may be, you know, USDA is lower interest loans. Some of that's easier to obtain than through the state. When you go federal levels, money. But we still have to borrow money.
Yeah.
And...
Joe?
John, I have a question. Would you be opposed to doing a, like, just regular commercial loan? Like through a bank? I've heard of a bank that's on Holland, that's on the west side of the state, that they specialize in commercial lending to municipalities. And I believe the interest rate is like 2.5%. Which would work, I would say, maybe better for us because we have the loan, we pay off a large portion, we continue to make our payments, we pay off another large portion, and then we continue with our payments. That way, we're, we're going to know what the payments are. Because even if you make a large payment on your house, that doesn't change the amount of your payments. So we can budget a set amount for, you know, whatever number of years.
What would be the drawbacks of building commercial loans? USDA loan or something like that?
USDA likes the big buck. They like the, like, the $12 million projects.
Okay.
And I think we found that out when we tried to go to them with the $350,000 for the, the water tower, then it just wasn't big enough. So they didn't turn us down, you know, we would do it.
They just kept saying, can't you put another project in with this? Or you have something else you want to do?
Clearly, yes.
Sure, but we don't need that. We don't need the walnut to break, we just want an acorn.
Exactly, that's what they, that's what they want. Joe, maybe you could, could you find that out?
Sure.
Find out what they did is maybe get them to send us some information and let, let John look it over and we will do it. Okay, well, I think that's probably enough discussion on that for now. We'll be talking about it again, obviously. So let's move on related to the water tower to have John explain to us about this.
Okay, so Dixon has been doing all of our inspections. The last painting, I think the last two paintings of the tower possibly. So since 1981 or so, when the tower was built, they've been doing the five-year annual inspections and whatnot. What you have before you is to get the ball rolling on the water tower because this is going to take, if I get this done now, turn in the stuff, they'll start doing the technical specifications, send out the bids. And we're probably not looking to get everything wrapped up, ready to go until April. You know, so these companies are still working right now, painting. And so they'll, they'll look at what we need on this tower. Ours is actually a small tower, so... But everything in here, if there comes a point in time, so I'm, I don't know if you have the full thing. On page 13, it gives the schedule of values and the description of services. So the technical specs, the bidding and the contract documents, that's one, those are lump sums. And if, if things don't go right after that is all said and done and you guys don't like what's coming back, as far as, we, we can stop the process once, you know, I mean, the, the total amount here, the estimated value or the estimated cost of their services throughout the complete project, they do all the bidding for us. The bids do come back to the city and get opened here. But, and then, you know, the engineer that I work with, he, he would come over and we could go through them at that point in time. So that's, you know, most of the groundwork, the things that are happening here, I'm responsible for. They're responsible for everything else in that schedule. You know, as far as making sure, because I don't, I'm not a tannemic paint guy. So they, they measure the thickness and whatever, the epoxy, the layers and what, everything. Make sure the welds meet inspection and whatnot throughout the whole process. So that's all in here of what Dixon's will perform throughout the process.
They're basically the inherent management service for the project.
Yes.
I read this thing twice and I could, let me figure out what the scope of work was. It's like, what are, what are they doing for us? So this, that answers it. They're just, well, they're putting out the bid. And then they're going to review the bids and give it to us.
Right.
And then supervise the work being done.
Yes.
And inspect them.
Yeah, that's what I went through, Bob. That's above where I ended up is they're, they're providing a service to John with all the technical aspects of, the scope of the project.
The expertise.
ID, engineering management.
And we get a, a year warranty that they'll come back in one year, check everything.
Inspect everything.
Inspect it.
In this lump sum of $42,600, in that management fee, we choose a contractor to do the actual work or multiple ones. Then in one year, they'll come back and inspect that work and that's included in this.
Yes, Dixon will, Dixon does the inspection.
Correct, correct. But they're, they're going to send it out to whoever their expert, they say is qualified.
Subcontractors working for...
And then they'll oversee them and manage them, making sure that they're using the proper material and they're doing it correctly. The surface is prepared, all that good stuff. And then in one year, they'll make sure that it's still correct.
Correct.
And we, now, okay, so what happens if there's an efficiency?
Then they come back.
They'll make the contractor come back and repair their...
Do repairs. Okay.
Because they're basically buying off on the contractor or contractors that eventually will do the work.
Right.
So it's kind of an insurance program for us in a sense. And one way to look at it, they're, they're managing, you don't have to manage them. You're just going to, why are you here today?
Right. Because, you know, in Chaiwassen County, there's probably no tower painters. So it starts branching out to a point where I, I don't have local contacts.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I'll have enough to do without the tower in service. So I, I think I've explained it pretty well. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here. I read it and I had to have the engineer come out. I'm like, you got to break this down a little for me because a lot of it is...
I'm with you on that one. I couldn't, it's...
It's legal.
Yes.
John, do you need us to approve this tonight? Or could council, now that they've heard your explanation, read this some more, come back in two weeks and...
I, I think that we're at a point that it, either we're going to do the tower or we're not, and this is the beginning.
Okay.
So I would... I recommend that we move forward with approving it or not.
One more question. Did they give you a, any sense of timeframe that they're looking at saying that, oh, we could, the process will be April and we should have contractors starting work by June or July or anything like that?
I'm hoping that I'm early enough that I get on the schedule and be one of the first towns as soon as the weather. I'm hoping, you know, it's a... the first towns as soon as the weather, uh, I'm hoping, you know, it's a less than 60 days of, so if, if May is dry and they're, they can do this one, you know, if, if they got really good days.
Right.
Then they can do it faster.
I guess, did, did they give, the Dixon give you any sense of the industry being slowed or backed up because of COVID? Because like, and what I do is backed up and what other people do, everything's backed up?
Yeah. No indication of that.
Okay.
Um, it's pretty much just they, these companies can do so many water towers a year.
A year.
They kind of know, you know, how many they can handle. It might be 10, it might be 20, it might be.
Whatever, right, okay.
You know, depends on the size of the company. Um, so the sooner we get this in, the sooner they can do the specs, the sooner it goes out to bid.
They'll pick somebody.
The sooner that we get on a schedule and get it done.
Can I ask you a question about that whole process? Doesn't really have to do with approving Dixon, but what happens to the water in the tower? And how does the city continue to have water when it's all emptied out and sealed?
So.
Like, how, how does that work?
So I run the tower down, no one knows unless there's something bad goes on. I put pressure reliefs out in the far parts of the system. I got some valves that I switch, I shut, I turn the wells on, I got two wells that run on pressure mode, and they maintain 58, 60 pounds.
Okay.
And the tower gets closed with a valve, and then I pray that, pray that.
Okay, no.
I know John brought up one, which is four, I think it was before I was on council, about perhaps trying to find a tanker truck to act as a backup water tower in a sense.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I did, um, that is not available to us. Lane had the one, I don't believe there's one in the state of Michigan. When I talked to Lane, I talked to a guy in Arizona now, uh, that's the nearest, that's our salesman service guy.
Vegas has those.
Uh, you know, the cost of that is probably going to be 20, 30,000.
To rent a storage tank, a 40,000 gallon tank.
You fill it up, you put a high service pump on it.
Right.
And if you install the wells, it does.
Kind of extra water tank in a sense, simple way to describe it.
Do you have confidence in our pumps being able to do that?
We've done this, we've already.
Oh, you have, okay.
Yeah, no one knew, so.
Okay, so there you are.
It was only for a week, though, so.
Thank you for answering that question. Well, counsel, any other questions for John? Are you prepared to take action on this contract tonight?
Did we anticipate this process in your, in your budget?
Well, the 350 should be a little.
This should be in that budget.
It should be fat, so.
Your 350 number, you anticipated having an engineering fee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't, not this, I, if I'm a little off.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I just wanted to make it that it was, it kind of in the original thought process that, oh, we're going to have this management fee of whatever it was.
And.
And now we have, now we have a hard number to go off.
Yes, and I think that we'll, we should fall in there. If things get too far out of hand, we may have to change the scope of the project. And once that gets, we can eliminate things, and, and it doesn't cost anymore, but if we start adding things, once they bid it and we change our mind about something, that's when things get down worse than most of us were to add.
Thank you, John.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution, whereas the city has received a proposed contract from Dixon Engineering Incorporated for the 200,000 gallon pro-ellips elevated tank, and whereas the city has reviewed the proposed contract, therefore it is resolved that DPW Superintendent John Sauter shall be authorized to enter into the aforementioned agreement on behalf of the city and is designated representative, the city being identified as owner throughout the contract with Dixon Engineering Incorporated for the contract amount of 42,600 dollars.
Second.
Larry has moved and Bob has seconded that we accept and adopt the contract from Dixon and appoint John Sauter as authorized to do that. I'll counsel in favor of that motion. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Is there any other business that may come before counsel tonight? Any public comment? Any counsel discussions and observations? Items for our next agenda would include, um, discussion, further discussion on pursuing a grant writer, further discussion on code enforcement officer, um, Joe's going to give some information about that bank that she mentioned. Anything else that we need on the agenda?
Do you want the bank on the agenda, or you just follow up and maybe?
I guess it depends on how much information she gets, I mean, yeah, so we'll just see. I mean, if she gets enough information that we can really dive into it, we might as well. We'll just have to see what you find out. Anything else?
Do you want to continue the conversation on the, uh, relief money?
We'll dig into that security thing.
Yeah, because I think on the relief, relief money, we didn't talk about it, but seems to me that John Plowman was in a few months ago now and talked about some money coming to the county, that we might have the opportunity to partake of some of that, which I think would be separate from the 218,000, correct, Joe?
Yeah, this, the 218 has come from the state.
Directly to city.
Directly to the city, so.
Yeah.
I think part of that continued relief money discussion would be what, if anything, we should ever expect from the county, come from the county.
I did on June 16th, as a result of his attending that meeting and telling us that, sent a letter to the Board of Commissioners, um, to, with, with attention to Brian Boggs and a copy to John Plowman, uh, telling them that we had been told there may be money available and that we would like to pursue a grant to provide funding for, uh, litany of the things you guys told me to ask about. I've not heard anything from Brian Boggs. I did talk to John about it, and he said he had talked to Brian, but as we all know, they have a lot on their minds. And, um, I'm kind of waiting for the dust to settle a little bit, so I can get an answer from somebody.
I'll see how much time lasts.
Yeah, exactly.
Might be a while.
Did I put something on there about, we discussed a little bit there today, of possibly going to one monthly meeting?
Oh, yeah.
With the possibility of a emergency meeting if we need money, if we get overloaded?
Devin, do you want to ask?
Would that require a change in our term?
Yeah, it would, but it's such, sure, something we can talk about. Do you want to have that on the agenda for an agenda item discussion?
Sure, I do.
Okay.
Or even if it's for a certain amount of the year or whatever, during the summer months or?
If Sura falls in.
You guys, you guys have been around here longer than us.
Okay, anything else? I will say, if anybody has any old jeans or shirts that were appropriate for a scarecrow, we're looking for scarecrow clothes. Um, if you could just bring those up, Dory's got a big o-tub there by her desk, we're going to throw them in there and decorate scarecrows with them.
Isn't it worthless?
Sure, if you got, if you like that, yeah, more straw. Well, I think that's everything, um, for the council to address tonight, so now at 7:58, this meeting's adjourned.